Tim Skogg, it's Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, July 6, 2020. First, I need to check with the board to see if anyone has a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening. Ken?
No.
Art?
No.
Tim says no. I know Tony is not able to attend tonight. Is Joe Barber out there? So it's just us three tonight.
He just came out, his mic's out.
I am not seeing him showing up yet.
He probably came out on my screen.
Joe, if you're out there, let us know. In the meantime, we will move on. Next up is minutes. We have minutes from our meeting on June 29 that were circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Moved by Ken, seconded by Art. Any discussion, additions, or corrections to the minutes? The question is, do we approve the minutes for 6:29 as circulated? Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Tim votes yes. So those minutes are approved by vote 300. Next up is warrants. Please bear with me. Okay, I have check warrant number one. Total amount. Let me squeeze in, try to make this a little bigger. I believe that says
So move.
Motion to approve from Art?
Second.
Seconded by Ken. So the major items here, $1,000 to Aflac. $13,000 to Bennington County for county tax. $2,300 to another $2,300 to Bennington County for county tax. Oh, that's for the North Bennington School District. I see that now. $25,000 to the Bennington Rescue Squad.
It's a fiscal 20 contribution.
Say again?
It's a fiscal 20 contribution.
Okay, and that's a community, oh no, that's a budget item now. Community appropriation. $1,200 to Nemrick, $700 to Nemrick. $2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping, $1,200 to Sycamore Landscaping. $5,500 to Vermont League of Cities and Towns. $500 and $200 to Daleys. Any other discussion on check warrant number one? The question is, do we approve check warrant number one? Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Tim votes yes. So check warrant number one, $55,220.81 is approved. 300. Next, we have a retirement warrant in the amount of $11,273.84.
So move.
Motion to approve from Art, seconded by Ken. Any discussion on retirement warrant? Question is, do we approve retirement warrant number four? Ken? Art?
Yes.
Tim votes yes. So retirement warrant number four, $11,273.54 is approved, 300. And payroll warrant. Number 26, and the amount is $26,014.64.
So move.
Motion to approve from Art, seconded by Ken. Any discussion on the payroll? Question is, do we approve the payroll warrant? Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Tim votes yes. So payroll warrant number 26, the amount of $26,014.64 is approved. 300.
Tim, we forgot to mention the agenda changes at the beginning.
Thank you. We would like to adjust the agenda without objection to include bid openings on remind me what the bid openings are on, Dave?
Yeah, Culver, Shasberry Hollow at the Hideaway.
We would like to do that after the DPW report, item eight on the agenda, and we also need to have an executive session to discuss a contract for selling a fire truck at the end of the session. Any objection?
No.
Okay. That takes us to announcements. Are there any announcements?
Just a reminder again that voting is going to be done at the fire, at the garage and not at the firehouse.
That's right. We are voting at the town garage on North Road, not at the firehouse this year. That is a move that we've instituted to help us with social distancing. We are also encouraging everyone to vote absentee. You can request an absentee ballot for the August 11 primary by calling the town clerk, emailing the town clerk, or going to the My Voter page on the Secretary of State's website. And if I read my legislative update correctly, everyone in the state of Vermont will be mailed a ballot for the November 3 general election. And here in Shasberry, we are encouraging everyone to, who can, to vote. Mail in ballot if at all possible and reduce the amount of clustering we have at the polls as much as we can.
I received a postcard today that will have, when I send it in, the ballot will be sent to me. It wasn't the ballot itself, it was just a request for the ballot.
Okay, and that was from the Secretary of State?
It was.
And that's for the general election, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, do we have any public comments? Okay, that takes us up to item seven, which is our Treasurers Report, and I see Melanie Dexter.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Happy New Year. Want to take a look at the cash flow?
Yes, give me time to click eight times and I will have it.
I'm sorry, I'm laughing so much, my son is being hilarious.
Okay.
So these are preliminary numbers. Some things will still change a little bit, but you'll see if we if we go down to the very bottom, yeah, go down to the very bottom, you'll see how we finish the year. So I'll just say that first. You can see that the revenues came in at 100.44%. Doesn't get much closer than that. And the expenditures are at 98.78. That'll go up a bit. I think it'll end up just a smidge above 100% also on expenditures, but another really, really great year and hats off to Dave Kieran and all of you guys for especially the last couple of months really tightening the purse strings a little bit. We ended up with about $100,000 in the bank, but with tonight's warrants, that's going to eat into that right away. So I'm going to be doing my first draw on the line of credit probably tomorrow. I don't have anything particular to say about any of the detail on this, but did you have any questions about how we, about our final budget numbers or any of the other items here, line items?
Well, looks good.
Just a comment, though, expenses will run ahead this year, probably close to 2%.
The expenditures?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I know there's some other stuff that needs to end up in there.
Yeah, and there's some transfers and some pre-pays that still have to be put in there. Some are quite sizable, so we're going to be about 2% over, I believe, this year. A lot of that is highway work also, but we did so much work on the highways this year. I was aware we were going over into certain budget lines and I let it go over because we were really helping grow it a great deal. So, but it's going to be about 2% over, I think, at this point. It's hard to tell until we balance everything out over the next two months when the auditors get here.
Yep. And we should mention, maybe it came up last time, that the auditors were there for the preliminary session and, you know, it gets easier every year. It, we've got it down to a science now, but they'll be coming back in, I think, September. Is that right, Dave?
Yeah, September.
We'll finish everything up then. You want to take a quick look at the reserve accounts? There's not a lot to say here. It's basically just water coming in. And then the money going out was just some money due to the general fund. I don't remember what that was. What's that $51,000, Dave? That was that was something I think we owed to North Bennington on the 260 line.
Oh, that's just the bills, the semi-annual bill for them.
Yeah, right, that's what I thought. The only other thing I want to mention is that I didn't yet do the internal control document that you guys need to sign off on every year. But I did just want to say that nothing has changed in our internal controls, except to the extent that we tighten them up a little bit. Nothing has, certainly nothing has loosened. So I will be submitting at the next Select Board meeting the document that you guys need to sign off on, but it's, there won't be any surprises on it. Any questions about any of that?
No, I just want to thank you and David for doing another great job this year on the budget management.
Well, I don't actually control anything, I just report it.
No, but the two of you work together, I know that for a fact.
And I'd like to thank all the department heads that we had to crunch down over the last few months. Everyone did a great job holding the line when we needed it, so everybody worked together.
That's true. And I can tell you, I see all of, everything that the other clerks and treasurers say to each other on the listserv and we are kind of unusual, I think, in how well we all get along and work for the town. Okay, I don't have any more.
Certainly appreciate it.
I agree, absolutely, yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're up to item eight, DPW report.
Okay, I'll give you a brief rundown to start with. The recent roadwork that's been completed was, anyone's been on Murphy Hill, Saligan and Avondale Meadows, ditch work is being done over there. Murphy Hill is about done, I believe. Stone check dams were installed on Murphy Hill. It breaks up the water flow. It's part of erosion control. It's a very good thing to have on that long hill there. Lower East Road was graded, Mountain View, Glasson View, and the upper section of Maple Hill. Brush cutting, which is part of the ditch work, has been going on along Murphy Hill. The ditch work has all been mulched and seeded. And there were a few washouts in the heavy rains they've taken care of, and of course, we've had more signs stolen that needed to be replaced. It's just an ongoing unfortunate thing. Coming up is continuing ditching on Murphy Hill Road in a different section. That's kind of a long project there. We are going to start installing some stone pillows and French drains. That'll be along the Murphy Hill Flats and Chapala Flats where the road is always bad in the springtime. There'll be a new gravel resurface on Palter Road and an underdrain put in. There's a dip on Church Street, Blacktop in town, and I think we all know where that is from hitting it almost daily. And we'll trim that up so that that's done. There's Blacktop to be finished on Hidden Valley Road, Moldy Pole and Birch Hill, and that's just patching. That's the plants open. And some people saw our contractor, Mr. Hosley out there, doing the roadside mowing today. That's getting going. And then grading will continue as needed in different spots around the town. Let's see. And then that's all I have for roads. If there's any questions on that before we go to the bid openings.
I just got a couple of comments. There is a stop sign at the top of Takeham Hill or Takeham Road where it meets with Leclerc. And boy, it's hard to, if somebody stops there, they can't see to the right to see what's coming down Leclerc Road. Was that something that, I don't remember always being there, and was that approved by the state engineer or was it just something that we decided was needed there?
Let me check through the ordinance, make sure that's in our ordinance, that's there, and we'll take it from there.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's very hard. You're stopped, you're stopped right at the peak of the hill and you really can't see even what's coming up the hill from the left or what's coming down Leclerc Road from the right. It's a very
Top of Takeham there?
Top of Takeham where it meets Leclerc, there's a stop sign all of a sudden and I never knew what was there. And if you do stop, it's not a good place to stop. I think other people should be stopping and letting the flow to stay on Takeham because you can't see, once you're stopped, you can't see left or right. Very good.
Yeah. I don't have to recall that either. Let me, let me check that out, Art.
Okay, and of course, I don't know, but somebody, I was told by Mr. Moffett today that Granger Hollow sign is, Granger Hollow is mislabeled. You've probably have heard that before.
No, I haven't.
Okay, he claims that the sign says Murphy Hill where it should be Granger Hollow.
Okay. So he's saying that we don't, we, Granger Hollow sign should be moved forward to, by Boot Run?
I don't know, I'm just
Okay, I'll see what I can find out about that.
He said that if you look at your GPS, although I don't know if he has one, if you look at your GPS, it says Granger Hollow, and you look at the sign and it says, says Murphy Hill, so.
Well. All right, I'll check into that. That could be a DPW problem, too.
Well, that's true, too. And the last thing is, is that we're going to talk a little bit about looking into purchasing more. I've talked to Mike a little bit. He is all in agreement that this, whatever he buys would be, have other attachments to it and all that sort of stuff. I think, I guess I would just like the blessing of the board for him to continue looking at what he can come up with with the understanding that there'd be other attachments and all that sort of stuff. And this would be something that would be used all summer. Really should be mowing the roads about at least two and three times would be better. A lot of the noxious weeds such as the poison parsnip will not keep coming back if we mow them two and three times a year. A lot of those weeds are annuals, which means it comes up from seed every year. If we just keep it from coming to seed, the grasses will think will come in and that sort of stuff.
I have no problem with Mike continuing to investigate the pros and cons of buying a tractor. Certainly, that's what his job, that's his job. I still remain unconvinced about the wisdom of buying a tractor for the town. I agree with what you say about beating down the invasions by more frequent mowing. I think there's a trade-off to consider there, however, about other maintenance that has to get done in the summer during road crew vacations and whether or not we want to elevate a third pass of mowing above the other stuff that they're, they're always trying to catch up on getting done.
I think, let's, let's, let's see how much they get done this year. Mike seems to be a motivator in keeping the crew going, and I think we're we're really coming in on, zeroing in on a lot of problem areas and hopefully we won't be doing all the serious road jobs that we have been in the past. That's just my personal opinion. He's doing an excellent job.
There's no doubt about that. He's doing an excellent job.
Whatever they get, whatever they get for a machine, I feel it's got to be due use.
Absolutely. No, he's convinced of that. I talked to him this afternoon. He's real excited about the different things that can go on it.
Right.
Any other questions, comments about roads? Okay, as we agreed, we would now insert into the agenda the opening of bids for the Shasberry Hollow Culvert project. Dave, I hope you have those because I certainly don't.
Yeah, I have them here. I'm going to open them in the order they came in. They all came in the same day. We have three bids. And as customary for us, I'll open the bids and beat off the bid price. Then I'll be submitting them to be reviewed by Mike and potentially our engineer who helped design the project, while we report back into the board. So the first one here is from Weaver Excavating. And the bid price is $386,312.50.
What was that number again, David? Thank you.
The second bid here is from Casella Construction. The total bid price is $497,000, even. The last bid is from Daniel Construction, which is out of a stunt name. And the total bid is $461,900. So that was the three bids for the hollow project. I'll be turning those over to Mike in the morning and he can look at them and we'll report back to the board at the next meeting, what direction we should go. Of course, I
I also would like them to be presented to Mr. Penney. He was the engineer that we've had right along, so I think between him and Mike, they should both look at them and make sure they're covering all the requirements that are needed.
Yep, correct. And I'll try and work up some financial package, the preliminaries of financial package for it. Because as you remember, the grant we received is only $175,000. But I think these are just projects we're going to have to face as time goes by. Hopefully, there will be some money coming out shortly for stimulus money for infrastructure projects, and it'd be nice to get a hold of some of that.
Okay.
Okay. And that is all I have for the DPW report.
When did this come up, for that Culver job? What's about one of the meetings I passed?
Sorry, Ken, my computer's dying and I have to get it plugged in.
All right.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ken, you brought that.
When did that come up, on that Culver? What's in the word of the meetings I passed?
You're breaking up on my end.
I don't know what I'd tell you. When did that come up, on that Culver?
When did what come up? I'm sorry.
I didn't know it was that. What Culver is that? What the hell, anyway?
Yeah, this is the Hideaway we've been talking about for
Four years?
Yeah, because we, this is the one we got the grant for like three years ago, or we applied for the grant and we were turned down for two years. Last year, when that time A and R changed the rules, so we had to make a different project.
Yeah, the insert, the insert was not accepted. Is that right, David?
Yes, that's correct. So now we have to do this more expensive project. We might have gotten away with it four years ago, but it's just not, not there now.
All right, well, I, well, tonight, was it, what the hell, anyway?
Oh, no, 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 no. It's the Hideaway.
Oh, all right, okay, all right. I thought it was more money that originally, anyway.
Yeah, we had options that were higher than this one when we first did it, when Chris Penessi first did it for us.
That right?
Like I said, five years ago.
Yeah, okay. I'm just, I didn't, I wasn't sure where it was.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, okay.
All right, so Dave, remind us, we got $160,000 grant to do this project?
$175,000.
$175,000, and our match on that is how much?
Well, our match on that would be 20%, but we're looking at substantially more than that.
Yeah, I'm saying that we, we kind of came into this expecting to spend about $200,000 and it looks like we're going to spend at least twice that on, on this project.
Pretty close.
And our, our only hope now is relief funds, COVID relief funds to fill the gap.
Well, if, if we, you know, the government has forever been talking about the crumbling infrastructure of the country. Hopefully, there'll be some grants that are provoked by the COVID crisis coming up and we can latch on to one of those. Otherwise, the only way to really do this is to go into some kind of bond to spread this cost out over amount of time. Because we're looking, no matter who's chosen, a couple hundred thousand more than what we actually have.
What, what have they designed this for? A culvert or a bridge or what? Amsterdam Atlantic?
It's, it's the same thing that went out. It's a box culvert, I believe. But when we review it all, we'll have the details and I'll have more information on financials.
Yeah, all right.
Figure a way that we can pay for it. It is unfortunate, but this is what happens in construction. Time goes by, rules change, adds the cost, and every year you wait, it gets more expensive.
Yeah.
The grant that we got, the $175,000 grant, was awarded based on a, a different assumed cost from, for the project?
No, $175,000 is the maximum structures grant you can get from the state of Vermont. So that's the end of our state financing for this project is $175,000.
Okay.
We have to look for a different funding screen or, as I said, we'll get some kind of bond for it.
How many, how many years left we have to use the $175 grant?
The end of, because we just extended it again, the end of 21, the end of 21.
Okay. All right, well, that's, that's one to deal with there.
Yeah, yeah. This will be an interesting one, but we'll figure a way to do it and have it reasonable, ways to spread it around. But there are other projects like this will be coming be coming up, I'm sure, as as time goes by. Unfortunately, they don't come up too often.
Has anybody checked that over beyond that, that big call beyond that?
Yeah, we keep our eye on it, but it's not going anywhere right now. And that'll be another, well, I shouldn't say it'll be the same, but that will be cheap either.
No. Well, like that point is big anyway.
Sorry?
That's that point is large.
No, it's not. No. But maybe if we look into that, we'll see where we go with this and look into that one to do it before it deteriorates to the level that this one did.
I was up there a couple of years ago and I just didn't think about it at all.
Yeah. That's the thing. If we do it soon enough, then the A and R hasn't changed the rules, maybe we can sleeve that one and be done with it pretty quick.
Yeah. Well, both of those COVID students were released, so I don't know why they sleeve that. I can't imagine.
Well, five years ago, we could. Now we can't.
Yeah.
And they were all up there with it, the engineers, A and R, everybody, kitchen gang people. And it's just a no-go. This is what we have to do.
Yeah.
We will move on to item nine, which is our discussion we've been having for a little while now about expanding roadside commercial. This started as a discussion of looking at the the commercial properties that we have up around the Hidden Valley area on seven A that are grandfathered in and concerned that if those businesses went out of business and a like business did not come in within a year, which is the way the rules go, those would no longer be commercial properties. And so we've been talking with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has been doing a good bit of work investigating the situation up there. We have a couple of members of the Planning Commission online. I see Mike Chanowski and Chris Williams. Welcome. And the last round had the Planning Commission going back and looking at specifically the request from the Select Board to identify the areas around the Hidden Valley area that are currently commercial and what what could be done there. Chris Williams, do you want to try and pin up anything there relative of the Planning Commission's position on this as it stands now?
Thank you, Tim. The commercial properties are outlined in our latest memo. It's a cluster of half a dozen properties. Clearbrook Farm, while it's a commercial entity, is exempt from local zoning by the agricultural exemption. So, but we've included five hundred feet both sides of the road in that area as Tim had been showing on this map here. It encompasses all the existing commercial uses and and a little bit more in that Ben Hewlett, although he's a commercial entity, doesn't have a business at this location, but it's kind of a minor point.
In your memo that you sent to us, there were some properties that were mentioned that were crossed out. Can you remind me what the the crossed out property you're about?
Okay, Tim. It was based on a motion in the past that the previous Planning Commission meeting in early June that talked about the exact disposition of the particular lots and the lots furthest north approaching Hidden Valley Road were not included in that motion. At subsequent Planning Commission meeting, nobody wanted to amend the motion or make a new motion. So that motion stands and it includes all the properties. It was just incomplete analysis of the situation that caused the reversal here. Now, the the property for, hold on, for Duffy, I said it was undeveloped, but this is not accurate. There's a house set well back from the road. I've never seen it. So it's the open hour and the property across the road at the corner of Old Depot that we're excluding as being undeveloped.
Okay. Now, we did, your memo did get circulated to the Select Board. Art has expressed previously a desire of extending roadside commercial to include the hotels a bit further south. What you're looking at here is my crude attempt on Google Maps to sketch in the area that you have on your map that Shelley did so nicely and then just sort of draw in black the boundary if we included, if we added to that all the way down to Governor's Rock Hotel. Actually, went a little further thinking we might include Franzando Kennel in that, but as I, when I finally saw it on the map, I realized Franzando's driveway is more than five hundred feet long, so it would not be included in the five hundred feet commercial zone, even if we did extend it that far. So we would probably, I assume, Art, stop just south of Governor's Rock if we if we thought in these in these directions.
Yeah. If you, if you look at what's, what is there already, let's start at Fritz Ludwig's apple stand and of course, then he's got his orchard. The very next house is, there is a logger there. He has skitters, log trucks, tractor trailers backed in there, you know, that type of thing. I assume that's somewhat like home occupation. Then you have a house and then the next one actually has a log yard out behind his house where he has several loads of logs already piled up and that sort of stuff. Now you've got the Galusha, which is historical society, so that would, I'm sure, would be exempt from roadside commercial. Then you've got all of Clearbrook's fields on the left side going up through. Then there is a house, which is Mr. Penion, who is a contractor, although he doesn't park a lot of stuff there, but he is a contractor. And then you've got the motels. In fact, you've got two of them, Governor's Rock, and then I think it's called Scenic Way or something like that, cabins that run up there. If if we're looking at at the, what is already at the chocolate barn and saying, if, why don't we call it what it is, I think you almost gotta call it what it is even further south than the Governor's Rock. I mean, you've got, you've got quite a bit of area there that is being used commercially right now. Just a comment.
Well, you can't forget Henry Marteca neither.
That that is already in. I think roadside commercial goes up to Fritz's. Is that not right?
That's right.
Yeah. So it would just be continued on from Fritz's a little bit further. If we're using the, and I, I don't really understand what spot zoning is, but I think I would assume that if you look at just that group that we're just talking about now, that really is kind of like spot zoning.
I agree.
I'm gonna pull up another map here. That is the current roadside commercial, the So if I recall what we were just saying, if we extended as Art was suggesting, would we get all the way to the the other commercial roadside commercial part? Not quite, I don't believe.
Well, the, what's in between is nothing but a big hill where I don't think anybody, anything could be developed that much, but I don't see any reason why it couldn't be. Actually, there's an old garage, a cement block garage there beside the road that obviously was used as a garage or something at one time, but it would be pretty hard for somebody to do. And I'm not, I'm not convinced that we should be doing both sides of the road, but I don't know if that's, if you gotta do both sides, if, if, my thought is just all the commercial stuff is on the left-hand side of the road going north.
No, there's nothing that says we have to do both sides of the road. Looking at what we already have, there are several places where it's only on one side of the road, I see right now.
Tim, what's the, what's the standing of the Hillbrook Hotel? That's, that county is commercial, is it?
I don't know.
You know, Chris?
It's long gone.
That's what I thought.
It's a rental property now.
Well, what, but what is a zone, Chris? I think that's what he's asking.
Yeah.
It's rural residential.
Oh, that is rural residential? Okay. So a roadside commercial must start at like when that happened or something like that?
At West Mountain Road.
Okay, so that.
The Baptist Meeting House.
I'm sorry?
The Baptist Meeting House.
Okay. So, so what about Henry Marteca?
He's in it.
Henry Marteca is before West Mountain Road.
Right?
Yeah.
And the propagation orchard there at West Mountain, that is not included currently in roadside commercial, am I correct?
That's correct.
It's, it's south of there that we have roadside commercial. Okay. Well, I don't see us making a firm decision here tonight. We're short a couple of Select Board members for one thing. Any other comments? Mike Chanowski, did you want to weigh in here?
No, I guess I would just say that I had, along the way, thought that maybe terminating at Old Depot Road and Birch Hill Road might allow a parcel to have dual access points. I keep thinking of like Maple Fields as a corner store that does a nice job of putting up a nice property and something, something that provides a business with a multiple access points might be of interest. And I think, I think north of Old Depot Road or Birch Hill Road, it does get pretty rural. And my only comment would be that, I guess I personally think we should terminate there, but we shouldn't really pay anything north of Old Depot or Birch Hill. I think that should remain rural at that point.
I, I agree. I don't want to go any further north, but I think, I think there's a lot of commercial being done already up until that point.
Yeah, I agree. I agree as well. On the, on the Planning Commission, I don't want to speak, personally on the Planning Commission, I'd argue for more commercials. I agree with that with more.
It should also be mentioned that the memo from the Plan Commission still includes the addition of roadside commercials south to connect Village Center with commercial in Bennington. I think, I think the Select Board is kind of still making up its mind about that. I think the general consensus that I've heard is that we're not sure there's enough commercial developability there to be worth the trouble. Any other comments there?
I would agree with that, Tim. I don't see any harm in doing it. What's the negative point of doing it?
My only concern would be, would we run into neighbors or landowners that don't want that to happen? We would be fighting a battle that we, we could potentially be fighting a battle we don't really have a lot of interest in fighting. Anytime you change zoning, you're, you've got to be prepared to, to, for somebody not to like it. That's my only thought.
The Robert Frost Museum that's in Shastbury, that, that's, is sort of, sort of in a commercials, sort of doing a commercial business.
Okay. I think our thought is to take this under advisement, get more of the Select Board here and then make a decision on how we want to proceed with this. Any final comments?
I, I would rather that the Planning Commission think about it. I have no intentions of overriding the Planning Commission at this time, but I would, I think they, I would like them to take my suggestions and see if there's any merit to it.
Chris, do you agreeable to that?
We'll discuss it at our next meeting, Art.
If you'd like me to come, I'd be willing to, Chris.
Okay. We'll take that under advisement.
Okay.
Did my crew Google Map correctly summarize your thoughts on where you would like to see commercial expanded? Or I guess you said you didn't necessarily mean to include the east side of the road?
Yes, that's right. I, I would like it to go from Fritz Ludwig's up through to, to include the chocolate barn and then stop at Old Depot Road or Birch Hill Road, that area there. At least on the west side of Route Seven.
Okay. It would probably be good for you to send with the Planning Commission the next time they talk about this and make sure they have your thoughts correct, because I don't know that I could get a finer point on my drawing than I did.
When is your next meeting, Chris?
It would be here, I think it's the Planning Commission, the fourteenth of July.
I assume it's Google?
Yeah, right. Well, remote.
Yeah, remotely. Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you all. We will take it under advisement.
Could somebody make sure I get that link, please? I don't usually see that.
Why keep it?
I'm gonna sign it up. I'll sign it up soon and get it over to you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, go ahead and send it to the whole Select Board.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Chris.
All right. Item ten on the agenda is VCDP Accessibility Modifications Grant. Cole Hall, Dave.
This was brought up a few months ago before COVID time and it kind of fell off the table, but what we want to start doing. the table, but what we want to start doing with the board's permission is I want to start an application speaker to get development funds for Cole Hall for design under the Accessibility Modification Grant, so that we can be ready to take advantage of again any infrastructure funding that comes up, because we do have to make this building more accessible than it is. It's, it's, it's at minimum, let's say. Uh, and the building needs some reworking here, whether that's the exterior structure that would have an elevator or a simple lift in the front, but you need to start exploring these things. So I want to look into the details of that and then try and look up some seed money to start a design process and investigate what the correct options are here. We also have to make adjustments to the front steps anyway, and there's just a few things we need to get going. This is part of the overall taking the garage down, increasing the green space around the front of the building and generally improving the property. Most of this, we're going to look for grant funds for it, just like we've done for the parks and everywhere else. But the overall push for this is making the building more accessible under, under ADA, because as you all know, the little lift we have in the back, A, it's on its way to the end of its useful lifespan, so we do have to come up with something fairly soon. And another part of this is there's a, a group that is trying to plant a million trees and they had talked about putting them in, in Howard Park and I have approached them about, well, when we take down the garage and expand the green space here, here they're donating trees, then we would have an area that we could accept a lot of trees.
I want at least one Christmas tree.
One, one Christmas tree.
One Christmas tree. That isn't chopped off at the top.
One, one Christmas tree. It'd be nice to move it a little bit so it's not growing because it's wires also, yes.
That's right.
But yeah, it's part of the overall, just continuing the improvements at Cole Hall, it is going to be the town hall for the way foreseeable futures. It's, it's the last major upgrade we have to do here. But I do want to look into the trees, boards in favor of that, if they're donated, along where the old garage was and across the opening in the back that leads to the property we had rented for years, it might be a good way. I know they were a little enthusiastic about it too, because it would be more accessible to the general public than being up in the back of Howard Park. So I think that combined with the overall project for accessibility, might, might make the place look a lot, a lot better. So far, there's no outlay of funds, it's just getting it prepared and getting some idea of how it's going to cost.
It's going to be shovel-ready though, like that?
Yes, that's why I want to get it going again, because if you're ready.
It's a secret, isn't it?
Yeah, if you're ready, you get it. If you're not ready, you go to the back of the line. That's why we're going back to the cover for a minute, we have something shovel-ready and as long as it doesn't conflict, because we have the other grant, then that'd be a nice one to put right in. It's not only shovel-ready, we'll have a contractor pick one up. So, yeah, that's, that's my goal, Art, overall, is if we have to put a little seed money in here to get a workable plan and then when it becomes ready, you submit it right away, because it's going to be the part of the line it's used for that gets everything.
Well, you certainly have my, my blessings.
Then we'll move, then we'll move ahead with that.
Ken, Ken and Tim, you know.
Oh yeah, no, I agree.
Yeah, I agree. Without objection, we will allow Dave to consider options for funding and planning to improve Cole Hall building site and access.
When are we going to, do you have an auction date in mind for the junk and stuff?
Mike and I have to talk about it. Uh, we might put some of the vehicles on Auctions International, I think it's called, to get a broader scope of people without, I mean, I had the idea of an onsite auction when this all started, which is going to happen.
We got COVID problems.
Yeah. And I've been approached by a couple of people who want to take the garage, but I still want to sell it to scrap. The worst-case scenario for the garage is someone takes it off our hands, they'll come dismantle it, as long as they have required insurance, that's of course a big deal. But you can get that insurance for pretty cheap for one month, so it's not, wouldn't exclude anybody. I'd like it all gone, because BCRC has already asked if they could store some stuff in it, some compost bins, I already have a few hundred in there. They asked if I could store some more in the fall and I said, well, I can't guarantee there's going to be actually holding in the fall. I don't want there to be a building in the fall, so.
Exactly.
We're moving ahead with that too. But it will be from the onsite, which I thought would be nice to do, it's going to go to our line.
Okay.
Okay, any other business?
Yeah, just a comment that some volunteers from the North Shaft Lions met with people from the rep committee and they gave us a to-do list. The work is going to be, of course, donated and they are, we are working on a, a list of expenses for materials only. Dave thought that that could be handled. And you're going to look into something about a flag pole also, right?
Correct, yeah. I just didn't have any ready idea of what a decent flag pole would cost us and even how to install it, so I'm going to get a number on that, then we'll, we'll move on that. The rest of it, yeah, that's, we can easily come that. The park actually are, are in pretty good shape, they have a lot of money in reserves and in requests to the park, so.
Yep.
We're in good shape.
Well, it's, it's, it's on its way.
What kind of stuff are you, is North Shaft Lions planning to, to do at the park?
Painting, fix, fixing soffits and things like that. Did they talk about a roof, David? I wasn't at, I couldn't make the meeting, but.
No, the roof will be fine, this is at the pavilion and it's staining it and doing some minor carpentry to it. They picked foreign red today, they're going to let, let, I forget your contact's name, they're.
Oh, Ray Cox.
And he got to go ahead with the color today and it's a two-part bench, this is an art, I believe it's two park benches they're going to build.
Yes.
And I just said, Joe, just pay us the receipts for the lumber, we'll, we'll be reimbursed for all that.
Yep.
Because that's ea, that's easy enough for us to do.
Well, thank you to you and the Lions for, for that offer.
Yeah, no problem.
I have one, I was approached by a local organization that wants to do a coin toss, I assume on 7A, this is not a local, it's a sports organization based in Bennington that has some Shastbury and Powell participants, they're having fundraising issues. They were turned down in Bennington and they've asked if we would consider it. Our own firemen do a coin toss, I think Columbus State Weekend every year, they are not doing it this year because of the fire situation. I can't see how this could be a, a good idea for the community to have cars being stopped coming in and people approaching their windows for coin toss or coin donations at this point. I'm not sure exactly why Bennington turned the group down, but I don't see it as something favorable for us. And if we let, if we let one group in, our fire department does it now, they're the only group that does it, and you know, we could wind up with a lot of people asking us.
When, when is it they want to do it, Dave? Will we have another meeting before then?
Uh, they didn't give a specific date, they're, they're looking around. Seems to be when Bennington says no, they're suggested to come here and ask.
I, I would ask you to get ahold of somebody in Bennington and find out why they weren't allowed there. Is there a legal, legal thing or is it COVID or what? I, I just, I don't always agree with coin, coin drops and I, I, I'm hesitant at this moment.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's a lot of rules to it too, and obviously the only practical place of doing it is on a state highway. And Joe explained some of the rules that they have to follow, and this is a youth organization, and of course all youth would be banned from participating, because you have to be 15 or over to, to be near the roadway.
Yeah.
So it has some issues, and I was going to send a question up to ACCD.
Yes.
Like, what do, what do you guys think about this? Because what it's going to do is stop a lot of cars, a lot of which are going to be out of state, which is going to just be an exposure, so.
I, I'd like to look into it more.
Okay, I will do that and get back to you.
Um, I, I'm willing to say I'm not going to be in favor of it just because of the, the COVID risk. Clearly, if you've got people stopped, they're going to not have time to put their masks on. As David said, you've got people coming from all over. To put coins in a, in a, in a hat, that's going to bring people within six feet, I just don't see how you can do that and respect social distancing. And if our firemen don't think it's safe, I don't think it's safe for somebody else to do it.
I don't think it's a very good idea. If you're, if a fireman is going to do it, why would you let somebody in here and set the chaff through?
Yeah, I, I just want a reason why we're, we're turning them down, other than just saying no. I think it's just polite, polite to have a reason.
Um, we could give them that reason. Do you still want Dave to check with Bennington?
Yes, I, I, I just, for the future, for the future, I just would like to know what, what League of Cities and Towns thinks about it too.
Okay.
All right, anything else under other business?
Um, I'd just like to thank Dave for keeping the bucket where it was.
Yes.
It all straightened out, everything we've gone through this year. He's done a wonderful job.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to wait for the final numbers.
Okay, reviewing action items from last week. I promised that I would talk to Marlene about election planning. We had that meeting this morning with Marlene, Dave and I, and so we've got a good handle on those procedures and, and expenses. Expenses do not look to be major and procedures look to be manageable, so that's, that's proceeding and we're all encouraged by the fact that we have the August 11 primary as kind of a, a dry run, where we're, where we're expecting light turnout. And after that, we can modify our procedures and proceed on to the general election. Um, I posted election information about the change in the polling place and encouraging, encouraging mail-in voting on Front Porch Forum. David, I believe you were successful in getting dates onto the sandwich sign on Churchill, on Church Street?
Uh, I mentioned it to Marlene, I believe they put them on, frankly, I.
I believe I told them, yes. And then Tony had asked us to check how we were generating the meeting warnings so that link to the meeting was clickable. I think we accomplished that. Did any, was everybody able to click on the link this time and get here?
I, I didn't bother, I just typed it in.
Me too.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the link issue last time was simply Tim and I did it in a different order, and when I got it back, I had sent it out, this is a blank PDF, which of course doesn't contain the link, not thinking about the link, because we hadn't done it that way before. So, I mean, I went deliberately up to the agenda to use the link tonight and went through fine.
Okay.
Okay, good, good. And then tonight, Dave, we ask you to check on the stop sign that has perhaps mysteriously appeared at Tinkham and Leclerc. The Granger Hollow sign, street sign, whether or not it's really Great Hollow or Murphy Hill. We would like Mike Inati and Chris Pennesi to review the bids we've got for the Shastbury Hollow covert project. Art is going to attend the PCD meeting to discuss roadside commercial at their next meeting. And Dave is going to check with Bennington to see what their reasons for dropping the, for not allowing the coin drop fundraiser on their roads were. Any others that anybody caught that we promised to do? Okay, we need to go into executive session to discuss contract matter involving the sale of fire truck.
So.
Group by Art, second by Ken. Do we go into executive session, Ken?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Ken votes yes, so we will move now into executive session. Thank you, everyone who's still online, thank you.